Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. We have a quorum. We have three people, two people in attendance and two online and two that are on their way. So we do have a quorum. Now, we have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and second that we will adopt the agenda as printed. We have all had the opportunity to review the agenda. Now, we are down to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green. They are telling me that I need to carry the motion for the agenda. I'm reading too fast. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we will adopt the agenda as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. We have all had the opportunity to review the minutes as outlined. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as printed?
So moved.
Second. The May 3, 2022 Regular Board Meeting Agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And now we are down to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Vice President Hilliard. And good evening, board members, to all of our team members, our community members, scholars, parents, all of those who've joined us here this evening and those who will join online. We'll begin, as we typically do, with our highlights reel from the instructional television team.
JPS kicked off the summer with a book parade and block party on Saturday, May 14 at Forest Hill High School.
We want to continue that reading during the summer because we have that loss of learning. And so we all want that. We want to continue on to read and just kind of develop a love for reading.
Bands marched as schools displayed their love for books on floats, boats, trucks and cars during the parade. Hundreds of scholars and parents were treated to free books, fun activities and refreshments.
We have to have creative ways to get our students to read during the summer months because we don't want them to have the summer learning loss.
Over 350 scholars, teachers and community members participated in the JPS STEAM Expo held on April 30 at the Jackson Convention Center.
This whole vision was realized as part of our district's literacy campaign.
Parents, scholars and district staffs celebrated literacy through science, technology, engineering, art and math.
This literacy campaign was aimed to form leaders and innovators of tomorrow by getting students involved in these disciplines early.
The expo featured fun shows, free books and approximately 100 STEAM exhibits. Scholars greeted visitors and explained the purpose and ideas that went into their magnificent projects. High school scholars who met at least two out of three benchmarks on the ACT were treated to a silent party at the Environmental Learning Center on May 6.
And that's English, math and reading. And so there are certain scores that you have to make on the test. That means that they are college ready.
Some of the fun activities included a silent headphone party, a game truck, obstacle course, laser tag, basketball and refreshments.
We had an ACT boot camp and I promised them that if they met two out of the three benchmarks that I would throw them a really big celebration.
Congratulations to our high school scholars. Get the district's official mobile app in your app store today. Get access to news, events, the district directory and even our donor choose site right in the palm of your hand. You can customize your experience by selecting which schools you want to follow. You will enjoy having access to our great tools in one amazing app. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.mus.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools and on Twitter at JPS District.
As always, we thank our instructional television team for developing that video of highlights for us. Board members, I'm pleased to present our outstanding Jackson Tugalu Early College High School graduating scholars. As you know, on Sunday, May 1, about 22 of our JPS scholars graduated from Tugalu College with their associate's degree. And as the inaugural JTEC's class, these young people, their families, our team, JPS team members and of course our partners at Tugalu all helped to build and shape this rare educational program and to bring to life this bright idea that was hatched several years ago. At this time, I invite our Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, who will join us to introduce these amazing scholars. Mrs. Marshall Thomas.
Great evening, everyone. At this time, I ask Dr. Evans to come up.
Superintendent Green, board members and JPS supporters, it gives me great pleasure to stand before you to make this presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite the inaugural class of the JPS Tugalu Early College High School Program. We like to call them the Tenacious 22 to please come forward. Tonight. Tonight, we are here to celebrate a collective win. The vision of this school district and Tugalu College to provide greater access to free higher education for students in the city of Jackson has come to fruition. Of the founding 44 scholars, seven graduated high school early and just completed their first year in college. As close to us as Jackson State University and as far away as North Carolina, we are so proud of our scholars. While three students moved out of the district, 12 are scheduled to graduate from their home schools, all taking with them college credits to continue college in the fall. While we are truly proud of all past and present early college high school students, we are especially elated to announce the graduation of these 22 remarkable scholars who will emerge from the JPS Tugalu Early College High School Program as rising college juniors or seniors. These 22 scholastic achievers have garnered over $8 million in scholarship offers. They have a collective GPA of 4.18. Six of the 22 will earn the academic endorsement on their diploma. Five will earn the distinguished high school diploma endorsement, which is the highest diploma endorsement our state offers. And on May 1, 2022, 20 of these pioneering scholars graduated from Tugalu College with an associate's degree. 19 graduated with honors up to summa cum laude, all before graduating high school. Yes, we believe these 22 scholars are the quintessence of excellence. They have not only weathered the storm of a global pandemic, they have completed high school with up to three years of college credits, vacillating between face-to-face, virtual, hybrid or online-only courses. They began as wide-eyed freshmen and have emerged as champions, ready to display the attributes of a JTEC's graduate. These men and women are collaborative, confident, honorable, self and socially aware, service-oriented, competent, hardworking, resourceful, self-motivated and tenacious. We wish them well in their future endeavors. Instead of saying goodbye, we say we'll see you soon. As students travel to colleges as far off as West Virginia, a few miles away such as Mississippi State or USM, or at the Eagle Wing herself, Tugalu College, where almost half of these scholars will remain tuition-free. 100% of our scholars have one. 100% of our scholars have one or more full tuition scholarship. These numbers are especially impressive since many started high school with a GPA just above a 2.0. This program is just one example of the many success stories being written at all seven JPS high schools. Our scholars represent their neighborhoods, Mississippi, students typically underrepresented in the collegiate environment. Some are first-generation college grads and they all represent the outcome of public education, a Jackson Public School District high-quality public education. So ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for these history makers, the Tenacious 22, JPS Tugalu Early College High School Program graduating class of 2022. With any family members or JTEC's faculty and staff, please stand and be acknowledged as well. Thank you for your support. Thank you, parents. And so at this time, we would like to congratulate our graduates with a certificate and a picture with our superintendent and Dr. Evans. Zaria Owen. Ayanna Nichols. Carolyn Nichols. Felicity Moore. Sanaya Martin. Moya Johnson. Shelby Jenkins. Tenille Cradeth. Eric Trinidad. Marissa Woods. Ethan Thomas. Jaleah Reedus. Monisian Osborne. Priyana Jackson. Serenity Hurd. Adriana Hawthorne. Michaela Harvey. Jordan Hall. Ramaya Green. And Asia Shirley. Let's give these JTEC scholars another round of applause for their outstanding achievement.
Board members, I'd just like to continue the congratulations and accolades for our leadership and the JTEC's team, Team JPS at JTEC. Hold on, young lady. Stand right here in the middle and let everybody stare at you for a minute. So to say that this program and the meshing of our organization with the historic Tugalu College and their organization, their structures and routines and all that, to say that that was, that it took work would be an understatement. We were not necessarily positioned to do what the team did. And Tugalu was not necessarily positioned to do what the team did together. But because there was this vision, because there was the leadership with the can-do attitude, because we had folks like Dr. Evans who was not shy about aiming the things that needed to happen. It's worth. Absolutely. So let's give her a couple of minutes. Thank you, Dr. Evans. I just, I didn't think it would be right for us to give these accolades and not really underscore the work. And really, words can't capture what it took to make this happen and to bring us to this day and beyond. So thank you, sincere thanks. Indeed, indeed. It's also just been awesome getting to know some of these scholars along the way and now to know that they're moving on as college juniors and seniors. It's just mind-blowing. Thank you all for making us look good. Congratulations. Amen. I'm accepting it. Thank you. Yeah. It was my idea. That's what I'm going to tell people. Sure, that was my idea. All right, moving on. Aligned with our strategic commitment number three, board members, which is talented and empowered teams, we strive to begin each school year with a full complement of JPS team members. We're constantly reviewing our staffing needs, intentionally gathering and developing a pool of applicants and improving our recruitment and hiring functions to reach our goals. At this time, I want to invite our JPS recruiter, Dr. Tommy Nalls, to join us and provide a staffing update for the school year 2223. Dr. Nalls, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Green. Good evening, board members, all of our JPS team members and stakeholders and family. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting our yearly spring staffing update. And so the goals of this evening's presentation are just to provide an overall update on district staffing and also provide a brief description or update on the current initiatives that are being utilized in order to address all of our staffing concerns. And so just a quick recap, our district goal, as always, is to become 100% staff. And to do that, the reason we set that goal is so that we can have a certified teacher in every last one of our classrooms in JPS. And so we also want to establish and maintain initiatives to recruit and retain certified applicants specifically in our hard-to-staff areas of elementary education, mathematics and special education, which is needed in order to help us reach that 100% staffing goal. So before we get into the numbers, just a quick recap of how we calculate vacancies. So vacancy in district is any position that we have that's not staffed by an employee. So if we don't have an actual physical body in that position, then we consider that a vacancy. When it comes to certified vacancies, it goes to a different level or another layer is added because when we, we have what we call limited service or long-term substitute positions, which are also counted in their vacancy numbers. So a long-term or limited service teaching position is someone where we have a person in that position, but that person is not properly certified to teach in that subject area. So for certified positions, we always add any positions that we do not have filled plus our limited service numbers in order to get our total true vacancies for certified positions. So currently, right now, we have 3,805 positions total within the district. And as of this year, we have closed, leading into next school year, 155 positions, which means moving into the 2223 school year, we'll be operating so far with 3,650 total positions district-wide. So when we break that down by category, we have about 1,561 classified positions, 1,762 certified positions and about 327 administrative positions that lead us to that total number. And so for classified individuals, we have about 325 vacancies, 402 vacancies for certified and then about 20 administrator vacancies. And so the total percentage, right now, staffing percentage for the district is about 79.5%. Typically, in my role as the recruiter, I focus a lot of my efforts, probably about 80 to 90% of my efforts, on the certified staffing positions because that's where our classroom teachers reside. So currently, for certified staff, we're at about 77.2. To give you a point of reference, back in 2019, around this same time, May 15, we had about 460 true vacancies in our certified area with about 443 of those positions being not filled. In May of 2021, which was an anomaly year, we had the benefit of receiving the waivers from the Mississippi Department of Education where all licenses, whether they were standard licenses or provisional licenses, were automatically extended. And that allowed us to be able to retain a lot of our teachers or offer contracts to a lot of our employees a lot earlier. So we were able to reduce the number of vacancies for that year. But now that those waivers have ended and we're kind of, in a sense, back to normal as it relates to the hiring procedures, processes, when we offer contracts and how we retain our certified employees, the numbers are still lower than they've been in the past, although they're not as, it's not as pronounced as it was when we had the waivers in place. So as you see, for this upcoming school year so far, we have 402 certified vacancies. 17 of those positions have already been filled with limited service individuals. And so that leaves us with about 385 positions not filled, leaving us a vacancy percentage of about 22.8%. And just for a point of reference, the, we began the school year this year with about 103 vacancies. Half of those positions were filled with limited service personnel and we've trimmed those positions, of course, throughout the year to reduce that limited service number. And so we began the year with only about 52.2 positions that weren't filled at the beginning of the school year, giving us around a 97% staffing rate. So one of the highest we've had since I've been in this position. So quickly, some of, so quickly, some of the things that we're doing to address or close these gaps is we look at our expired standard licenses. We have about 59 of those individuals that are outstanding. And at the end of this licensure year, which is June 30, if any of those teachers have not renewed their license before that date, then we can, they can request a reinstatement license for one year from the Mississippi Department of Education, which will allow them a calendar year in order to earn the CEUs they need in order to renew their certification. So we'll be able to retain those individuals as well. 99 of those are from licenses that we've requested for individuals, whether they're one-year licenses or emergency certificates in order to have teachers to teach. And just as a point of reference, we only requested 106 this year, where in the past, last year, we requested 390, the year before that, 241. So a lot of the efforts that we've put in place to assist our employees with teacher certification, helping them navigate the process, has allowed us to reduce that number greatly to make sure that we have certified teachers in every classroom. And so so far this year, of the 99, 49 have, we've already requested licenses for them for next school year so that we can retain those individuals as well. And the last number that you see at the bottom are the contract-eligible individuals. These are individuals who did not return their contracts during the normal contract signing period, but we're doing, I guess you could say, triage at the school level to just verify with those individuals whether or not they plan to return for whatever their reasons may be. And so these are individuals who, once they agree to return, that we can retain those individuals as well to help lower that vacancy number as we work throughout the summer to staff our students. So really quickly, just moving through the initiatives that we have in place, we are utilizing our recruiting incentive, our signing bonus. The one that I wanted to highlight is we've added the $10,000 signing bonus for career in technical areas. And we've actually already been able to hire or recommend for hire three individuals who were attracted to those positions as a result of the bonus. We're also implementing many of our Grow Your Own initiatives, like the Mississippi Teacher Residency Program. We just recently renewed our agreement, this time with Jackson State University. We currently have 20 participants in the residency program in the district, 11 which are currently teaching in JPS schools. And then we're also continuing our university partnerships with the University of Mississippi as well as the one that we renewed earlier this year with William Carey University. And then last but not least, we're also providing practice prep services for teachers within the district. This fall, we had 68 participants that both at a pass rate of about 94%. We have 72 that are getting ready to test this spring and we'll have those results by the end of the summer. And so we're looking to expand these initiatives to help focus more on our hard-to-staff areas in mathematics, elementary education as well, special education. Any questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Very impressive report. I think we all look to see what progress is being made in terms of hiring certified, qualified individuals to teach our children. And I'd just like to compliment you and your group for the hard work, obvious hard work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Nalls, I do, just a quick question about the data. You also included the note that in August 2021, a year ago when schools started, the 2.9% vacancy rate, which is a great number. Was that number, so you mentioned the oddity of the 2020-2021 year, which led to that much lower vacancy rate at this time a year ago. Is that also indicated in that 2.9% rate last August? Or do you think we're on track again this year to get down towards that number by the time we start the school year in the fall? Does that make sense though?
Yeah, it does. And the short answer would be yes, I do think that we're on track. And so a lot of it is combined efforts between my office as well as our school administrators to help make sure that we are recruiting certified individuals. Many of the individuals who received waivers from the State Department, we worked with them all year long to ensure that they will be eligible to receive contracts as we move into this next school year. So as you can see, if I can just pull it back up real quick. I think I turned off the clip. Pull it back up real quick, the, this, no, this, this graphic. You can see that the numbers that we have are similar, but yet, I would say, much lower compared to where our positions, our field positions were even prior to the pandemic year. And so to me, that speaks to the volume of work that we've done educating our educators about certification, tracking to make sure that they are aware at the beginning of the year when their licenses are expired. tracking to make sure that they are aware at the beginning of the year when their licenses are expiring, working with our Teaching and Learning Department to ensure that they receive the professional development to gain the CEUs they need to renew, so that when we do offer contracts in the spring, that they're eligible to receive them, but also offering them early enough so that once we know where our vacancies are, we can spend more time during the summer actively recruiting, hosting hiring events, uh, promoting, you know, letting people know the information, and utilizing our recruitment incentives to, to not only attract new teachers, but also, uh, teachers from other districts who are interested in coming to join JPS. And I, I didn't mention in the prior point as well, we have our student-teacher initiative where, uh, we completed it for this year. We retained a, a good number, off the top of my head, I think about half of our student-teachers who were doing their student teaching in Jackson Public Schools are either working in, uh, are either currently working in the district or they've agreed and signed contracts to come and teach at the elementary level for JPS. So that's contributed to helping us lower our numbers as well.
Thank you, Dr. Knowles, and thanks for all of the hard work.
Absolutely.
Do want to just again underscore the, um, all of the thoughtful work and the strategic work that's, um, going into our, our recruitment and, and, and staffing for the district. Um, just appreciate the, the long and the short game that our team is playing. You know, we want to build the pool. We want to ensure that we have more and more people who are ready and prepared to take on those roles, even as we, uh, position ourselves to be more attractive, um, to those who are, who are already teaching in other places. So, um, you know, that was a really quick run-through of some ongoing programming that we've talked to you all about over time, but just to appreciate the hard work of our team, um, Stephanie Nelson, Sandra Lyons, uh, the rest of the HR team, all of the school leaders who under, who are understanding more and more the importance that they play in recruitment and, and retention and, and, um, you know, just talent management. Um, and then as well, all of our partners, so the universities that are, are seeing us as a, a stronger, more viable, uh, placement for their student-teachers. Um, you know, we're starting to get some really good looks from those, uh, uh, students as they're preparing to, to finish school and looking for, um, their teaching jobs or other jobs. Um, and we certainly cannot forget those who are funding, um, our projects. The federal, uh, projects or, or funding that we're getting, but as well, Hewlett Foundation and Kellogg Foundation, who've been wonderful partners to us in helping to seed and fund some of these, um, um, efforts to, to develop teachers, uh, in particular teachers, uh, and especially in those harder to fill, uh, areas. So thank you, Dr. Knowles, for all of that really important work that you're doing. And board members, as, um, as we begin to wrap, um, uh, as you might already know, I'm sure you do, there are plenty of studies that have long demonstrated, um, that, that scholars who participate in team sports tend to earn higher grade point averages. They, um, tend to be 15% or more likely to attend college and, and have higher test scores. And they tend to experience fewer behavioral issues. Um, our athletics, athletic, I'm sorry, athletic programs are powerful tools that bring scholars together and create a sense of community. And scholars develop powerful and lasting bonds with their peers. They learn to work with others and to overcome conflicts. And they develop stronger leadership skills rooted in their own self-confidence, a commitment to a common cause, and discipline. The JPS Athletics Program is a key component to commitment number four in our strategic plan, which is a joyful learning environment. And at this time, not Mr. Darryl Jones, uh, but Mr. Green, Kenneth Green, is here to, uh, share with us a bit about our, uh, an overview of our JPS Athletics Program. Mr. Green.
Great evening, Superintendent Dr. Green, board members, colleagues, and community members. On behalf of the Athletic Department, I'm excited to present, present to you an update on athletics. Uh, the title of the presentation is "The State of Athletics: Do Athletics and Activities Prepare Scholars for Greatness?" Over the past nine months, from August to April, we've been, we've been collecting data on our scholar athletes as it pertains to attendance, uh, behavior, and course performance. All scholar athletes at all high schools were tagged, uh, in SAMs at the beginning of the year. Uh, by tagging those students, we were able to track, again, their attendance, behavior, and course performance. Uh, on this slide, we just want to take a quick look at our vision and mission statement of the district and our core values that drive our work in the Athletic Department. What do these celebrities have in common? They all played high school, uh, sports. Forrest Whittaker played, uh, football. Uh, Jamie Foxx passed for over a thousand yards at his high school. Britten Spears played basketball. Uh, Sam Walton was the high school quarterback at his high school. Kate Middleton ran track and was on the swim team. Dana Owens, also known as Queen Latifah, played basketball. President John F. Kennedy, uh, was on the swim team. He also lettered, uh, in swimming at Harvard. And then Jennifer Lopez, uh, ran track, uh, and played tennis. What do they all have in common? Successful people in sports are associated with each other. I want to read the first, uh, line of this quote. It resonated with me. It's been said that one coach will impact more people in one year than the average person does in a lifetime. Our coaches matter in the district. Coaches help build trust, trust in relationships. They help build confidence, and they help build better mindsets of our students. Our present, my presentation objective today is provide data on athletic offerings in the district. We want to share the data on our scholars, athletes, attendance, behavior, and course performance. We want to share our plans and next step related to athletic improvements. These are the, uh, programs that's offered at our middle school and high school. The programs involved, uh, are not housed in middle school, but middle school students, grade seven and eight can participate in those programs that's involved, uh, in their feeder high school. Our athletic core values, as it pertains to equity, we want to provide quality athletic programs at all of our schools. Uh, as it pertains to excellence, we want to provide quality coaches at all of our schools. And as, as it pertains to positive and respective culture, we want to provide regular routine maintenance at all of our facilities and stadiums, and we want to provide timely transportation to all of our programs at all of our schools. Participation in athletics, this is some of the data that was collected. This year, uh, the enrollment in high school was 6,178 students. Out of those 6,000 students, 2,108 participated in athletics. That's 34%. 4,070 did not participate in athletics. That's 66%. By 2025, we want to increase our athletic participation to 50% in the district. We believe that this will increase enrollment, uh, in our district. Disziplinary fraction. We had a total of 3,024 disciplinary fraction in the high schools this year, from August to April. Uh, 609, uh, were from our scholar athletes, which is 20%. And then 80%, 2,415 was non-scholar athletes. So by 2024, which is the end of next year, 2223, we want to decrease our disciplinary fraction to 10, 10%. Average school daily attendance, we also look at attendance. As you can see, you, we have the attendance of all of our seven high schools. The scholar athletes are in, looks like purple, and then the nus, the school is in orange. As you can see across the district, our scholar athletes have a higher average daily attendance, uh, as it pertains to the school ADA. Also, we looked at district-wide. Again, we calculated all of the high schools, uh, again, this is high school data. We calculated all the high school average daily attendance. And the district, uh, ADA was 84%, and then scholar athletes were 90%. Grade point average. Again, all the students were tagged, so we were able to run, uh, a cumulative transcript for our students that showed their class rankings. Uh, we looked at the GPA for every high school. As you can see, students that participated in athletics had a higher GPA in every high school, uh, when compared to the overall high school GPA. We also looked at non-participant. We took the, uh, athletics, our scholar athletes, out of the, uh, uh, school GPA, and we compared them to the non-participants. So again, the scholar athletes GPA was 2.9, and our non-participant was 2.5. So that's a higher GPA also. Great news. A hundred percent of our seniors this year that participated in athletics are on track to graduate. That's some great news. More great news. Uh, athletic facility improvements. Uh, we, the district has done a awesome job. And we want to thank the board for approving these improvements in, in our schools. It made a big difference. As you can see with the increase in attendance for scholar athletes, the increase, uh, in, uh, GPA and the decrease in behavior. So it, it makes a difference at all of our schools. And just showing you a couple of our improvements in our schools. We're currently, we're currently making improvements at Hughes Field, uh, if you'll go back to the last slide. Um, we're getting new turf at Hughes Field, and it's projected to be, uh, finished on September the 4th. It will have a baseball field and a softball field, which is much needed in the district. Some more good news, our basketball, uh, again, it's one of our most, uh, prominent programs. As you can see, over the past 15 years, we had seven girls state championships, and we had 13 boys state championship in basketball. So we're always competitive in basketball in, in the state of Mississippi. Looking at the combined high school enrollment data, as you can see, enrollment has decreased over the past 10 years. Um, 1,445 students, uh, have left the district. Uh, and our goal is try to increase that number back to that number, which is 7,610, by 2025, by increasing the number of students that participate in athletic activities in each school. Our opportunity, our opportunities for growth. Improve scholar enrollment, improve team competitiveness, especially in baseball and football. We have some, uh, some areas, some weaknesses in baseball and football, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Uh, ensure regular maintenance and upkeep of facilities. Identify additional bus, bus drivers to support athletic programs. Develop alternate resources for revenues to support athletic programs. Develop pipeline of certified teachers and coaches. Uh, more information about boys basketball, as you can see, uh, over the past 15 years, six out of seven schools had a winning record. In girls' basketball, four out of seven schools had a winning record. And you can see the number of wins in blue and the number of losses in orange. JPS football, it's one of our top rev, uh, revenues in the district. Uh, so that's the area that we want to improve on. As you can see, we had a lot of losses over the past, uh, 14 years, 70% losses, uh, 30% wins. Uh, but we're, we're trying to improve that through, uh, the hiring of, uh, quality coaches and, and improvement of our stadiums and facilities. The last 14 seasons of baseball, as you can see, we had 74% losses, uh, and 26% wins. So that's also an area of improvement that we're working on. The plan. Our goal is to increase the number of scholars that participate in activities and athletics from 34% to 50% in our high schools by the close of the 2025-26 school year. Over the past four months, uh, we have established a committee of retired JPS coaches, administrators, uh, current JPS administrators, band directors, clergyman, uh, Mississippi High School Association staff, entrepreneurs, and friends. And we meet monthly with them, uh, to, to discuss plans to optimize our athletics and activity program. Key takeaway. Our high school scholar athletes have a stronger attendance. We saw that, fewer behavior infractions, and better overall grades. Again, we have made strategic investment in facility improvement. Uh, the whole district has seen it, the whole city of Jackson, we've done a great job with that. Again, thank the board, thank superintendent for that. Our Athletic Optimization Committee will offer a set of recommendations for improving our overall programs and ensure that more scholars are connected with rich athletic and co-curricular offerings. That concludes my presentation. And any questions or comments?
Ms. Hillier, this is Ted Seback. I have a few questions, if it's appropriate at this time.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Seback.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Green, thank you for the presentation, um, and thank you for all of the, the data. Um, what would you say are the top three investments still needed, um, to, um, position us best to achieve that goal of, of, of leveraging athletics to increase enrollment?
Uh, top three investments?
Yes.
Um, well, one of them, we're already doing, again, better facilities, uh, to attract, uh, more students, more scholar athletes. Uh, I think we are on the right track with that. Building more relationships, I, I'm thinking with our parents. Uh, we have a lot of, a lot of students that does not participate in extracurricular activities because the parents or the students, uh, don't feel a connection with, uh, the school or the coaches or for whatever reason. And thirdly, uh, just making, making it more attractive for our students to, to, to want to be involved in, in athletics.
I'd chime in, um, and, and actually, Mr. Green and, and Coach Jones have spoken to this previously, but, um, we, we also know that, and they've been doing a good bit of work in benchmarking the, uh, salaries, the stipends for our coaches. Um, and so just understanding that if we really want to, uh, attract and retain, because we can attract folks, they want to be part of Team JPS and on this platform here in the, you know, largest urban center here in the state. Uh, but to retain them, we've got to do a better job of, um, uh, providing them with competitive and, and, um, you know, highly competitive, um, stipends. So that's, that's an, uh, area that I'd lift up for investment.
No, that, that's really helpful. What role, what, what about at the middle school level? You mentioned the need to attract more scholars, and I'm just having raised two, two, um, scholar athletes in different sports. Some of them were in the, um, what they, they were going to do in JPS. Some of them are outside of the, the district. The role of getting students involved at a young age, I think is, is, well, I'd be curious to get your take on getting students involved at a young age, how critical that is. And then, um, if it is, uh, what type of investments or planning do we need to be thinking of at the middle school level?
Um, we're currently working with, uh, uh, our elementary schools and also with our middle school sixth grade by offering more intramural, uh, leagues. Uh, because again, they can't participate into athletics until grade seven and eight. So we're trying to build our athletic scholars up at an early age so they'll want to participate once they get to seventh and eighth grade.
No, that's helpful to hear. Thank you.
One thing, um, that I heard you say that I, that I think is so going to also help. The involvement of the, um, the The involvement of the community persons that you named, because you can get the, even though they can't participate in school, you know, the, what do you call these, the teams?
The leagues.
Yeah. The Little League, okay, yes, the Little League. People who've got all these children, they know all of this. Little League players, you know, and that prepares them, and hopefully, they will, you know, will transition on into middle school and high school.
Right. Yeah, like I said, we're currently working on starting up our intramural programs at the lower level. We're asking community members to take the lead on that, because you know, funding is big when it comes to athletics. So when we're funding middle school and high school, we already have a set budget when it comes to the lower level schools, we will need support from our community members.
I have...
Question?
Yeah, I have two questions. I was curious to know, you said over the last four months, this committee of the, in all the parties to be, was developed. What was it developed out of? Like, what was the idea behind it? And what exactly do they do? And is it district-wide, like, all, is it represented by all high schools?
Yes, it's represented by all high schools. And what they do is, they go in and look at how we can improve our athletic programs to come up with a plan, a strategic plan for over the next couple of years on how do we make our programs better within our schools?
Yeah. Board Member Thompson, you know, we didn't allot a ton of time for Mr. Green's presentation, but one of the reasons for providing some of the feedback there, or some of the data there on not just the performance of young people in school, attendance, grade point average, graduation, all those sorts of things, but also wins and losses, is as you peel this back and really look more and more at the data of, and the strength of our programs, you know, it's hard to amass a team of really talented, committed scholar athletes with a deep enough bench to where you can be really competitive with some of the area schools where that might be the only high school in your area. And so all of the young people who've only known basketball, or have only known tennis, or have only known baseball, or whatever, football, whatever it might be, you know, they're going to that school, and so they have a deep, typically will have a deeper bench. So one of the things that we're pushing ourselves on is how do we position our schools, the catchment area for each of the schools and the programs offered at that school, so that we've got a deep enough bench where, you know, those who want to play at a competitive level, they've got that opportunity. And for those who perhaps are not, you know, rising to that level but still want to play, there are opportunities for them as well. And so this committee is helping us, not just internally, to think about, you know, what are the programs that we should be offering, perhaps that we're not currently offering, and where, and, you know, and that sort of thing. But also, are there some things that we're offering throughout the district that perhaps we don't need to? Because every program costs, and coaching, and the equipment, and fees, and all those things. And so, you know, if, you know, if we're going to make an investment in a particular area, how do we get the most bang for the buck, especially where there's interest? And I'm just, I'm proud of the coaches and the scholar athletes and parents who've rallied around swim. And that's not an area that we've, you know, typically supported. But in the last few years, they're just like, listen, Dr. Green, what are you going to do? We're here, and we're prepared to show up in competitions and all of this, and so that forces us to really look at that and prepare to make some investments in that. And the same with tennis, and the same with soccer. And, you know, I think we've just, for a long time, we've not invested in ways that we should have in baseball and softball. But those other three that I just mentioned are, seem to be newer burgeoning sports in our area where we've got scholars and, you know, here's an opportunity for us to do something about it. That committee is helping us to think critically about how we make some strategic investments and decisions around those programs to get the most bang for the buck.
Very good. That leaves me, so another question. My second question was, you mentioned about the other programs and offerings that may not be at middle schools but are at the high schools, and the middle schools are able to participate in them. And I am definitely a witness of that, because my daughter started cross-country at Witten Middle School with Wittenfield High School, but it was because I already had girls that were on the cross-country team that I knew about that. How are other parents made aware that their children in middle school are able to participate in other high school things that are not offered at their middle school? That's one. And then two, you mentioned swim. Not every high school has swim. So if you have a child at another school, are they able to participate in something like swim?
We have school-level ADs at all of our high schools and middle schools, and their responsibility is to get that information out and share information with our parents and our students when they're going to have tryouts, if it's not offered in the middle school. We also send out blasts to parents from that high school. And again, it's also posted on our website when they're going to have practice, when they're going to have tryouts for different programs.
I think it's important, because something, Dr. Green, when you mentioned about the reach of, you know, so if you've got a child that starts in middle school with this high school, more than likely, when they're on that team, they're going to be in that high school on that team. They're not looking to, you know. So it makes a big difference if we can get the reach that young for those sports and teams.
Can you speak to the swim opportunities? If scholars are attending a school that does not have a swim team?
Every high school has, they'll swim under their high school, under their feet at high school. We're having swim trials, May the 17th and 19th, at Broadwood Swimming Location, Swimming Pool. So again, that information is also on Athletic Department website, and we notified all of our middle schools, grade seven and eight, that they can participate in swimming.
I'll ask you, Mr. Green, just to confer with Mr. Johnson, just to make sure that we're dotting every i and crossing every t with getting the word out for the opportunities that we have. I'm wondering if behind the question is not also a suggestion that we might need to do a little more to get the word out?
And we did have several students that participated in the state for swimming this year, so they did a great job.
Awesome job. That's all.
Yes, they're coming up. Mr. Green, thank you so much for...
One more thing. I want to recognize any coaches in the building. Will you please stand? Our coaches, they do a magnificent job.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green, for joining us this evening and sharing all this information. I'm excited for where we continue to go, especially with our new facilities. We know that we've got to show some love to our baseball, softball, tennis, and to our swim and soccer scholars. So there are continued plans in those areas. And with that, thank you again, Mr. Green, and to Mr. Jones in his absence. Vice President Hilliard, that concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. It's always very informative. At this point, we are at public participation. Attorney Turner, do we have any participation from, for public comment?
Board Member, you have one person who signed up to address you this evening. Mr. Baba Lukada would like to address you regarding building acquisition issues.
Okay. Community members who would like to make a public comment should email their requests to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 4:00 p.m. You will, of course, before we get started, I just want to set the expectations for these comments. You will, of course, have three minutes for your comments. The board believes the public's comments is very important. The board will listen and consider your comments, but we will not respond to your comments at this time. If there is an issue that you have not taken to leadership at a particular school or the district administration, we encourage you to do so. And board members can be reached at our email addresses, which are on the JPS webpage. Yes, sir? You may.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
As we prepare for graduation of all of our scholars who are qualified to graduate this year, we want to be mindful that during the month of May, there are some special things that are important to your scholars who are of African descent. On May the 2nd, we observe the birthday, the Earth Day of Dr. Mario Vadelli. On May the 19th, we will observe the Earth Day of El Hajj Malik El Shabazz, AKA Malcolm X. On February, on May the 21st, there is a national cleanup initiative that is encouraging members of the African community in particular, but all of America, to clean up their community as an act of reflecting the godliness that is a part of each of us. And then, of course, on May the 25th, we observe African Liberation Day, which, of course, is the day to acknowledge the elimination or the removal of colonization off of our motherland. So with those things said, we wanted to remind the board of some things that we had mentioned at our last remarks, and just to make sure that everyone is aware of the legacy of the people's names that we call. And so we just want to reiterate that Margaret Walker, Dr. Margaret Walker Alexander gave us two great works, more than two, but particularly two great works. Jubilee, the novel Jubilee, and of course, a poem for my people. And of course, as we said in our last remarks, the reason why she had to give those great works was because she lived it, and some of us lived it right alongside of her. I was concerned that maybe some of our board members may not remember, and particularly some of our, some of our audience may not remember Vernon Damer, who was killed for by a midnight drive by the Ku Klux Klan for registering African people to vote. Borelous Jackson, whose car was blown up simply because he received a job that would have had him supervising white people. Or, of course, we know Fannie Luhemer, but what about Reverend George Lee, who was murdered three months before Emmett Till was killed? So these kind of things are important to us, and as a result of those important issues, we need to remember that there are alternative uses for the buildings that are vacant in Jackson Public Schools, and some of these programs we want to bring to the Jackson Public Schools so that we can have more scholars like the ones that we observed earlier in this meeting. So we thank you for your time, and we hope you'll take those things into consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have information-only items. Board member reports. Dr. Seback, are there any, do you have a report you would like to give?
No, I do not, Ms. Hilliard.
Okay, thank you. Student Board Representatives Presentation Final Overview. This is Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas, Assistant Superintendent of High School Division.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hilliard. Board members, Dr. Green, JPS family and friends, the administration would like to thank eight outstanding young men and women for serving as student school board representatives for the 2021-2022 school year. They truly represented their schools and the interests of their student body with excellence, a growth mindset, and a positive and respectful culture. We are proud and excited to see them walk into their destinies as they have demonstrated their drive to make a change in the world. At this time, I would like for each member to come forward for final acknowledgements and recognition for serving on the school board for the 2021-2022 school year. We have Mackenzie Edwards. Mackenzie is accompanied by her mentor, who is Ms. Makita Davis, so Ms. Davis. Please, you can come up also, step behind her for a picture. Kevon Williams, his mentor is Dr. Antrice Bryant. Cambria White, her mentor is Ms. Tara Lomax. Kayla Haslett. And Kayla, I know your mentor is not here tonight. Thank you. Ari Bradley. Ari's mentor is Ms. Bolar. She's not here tonight. Javerin Battle Callaway. Javerin's mentor is Ms. McWilliams. And lastly, Sidney Hilliard, and her mentor is Ms. Angela Hawkins. So let's give these outstanding young men and women a round of applause, and thank you for serving on the school board for the 2021-2022 school year.
Awesome job.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a review of agreements between the Jackson Convention Center, I believe that, and the JROTC Gala. That is you too, Ms. Marshall-Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. The administration is presenting for information the contractual agreement between Jackson Public Schools and the Jackson Convention Center complex to conduct the 10th Annual Consolidated Military Ball on Friday, December 16th, 2022. Over the past eight years, 800 attendees have participated in the military ball, representing all seven high schools. The licensing agreement has been presented to you for your review, and if you have any questions about the presented contract, I'll take those at this time.
Any questions? Comments? Well, if you've not attended that affair, you should make plans to attend. It is, and I think that that was an excellent idea, to combine the schools, and the ball is always excellent. Dr. Green gets a chance to dance. And the food is excellent. My part. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Marshall-Thomas. Dr. Knowles, we're down to your review of agreements between Union University and the Jackson Public Schools.
Greetings again. The administrator has submitted for review the agreement between Union University and the Jackson Public School District to provide placement for student teachers... to provide placement for student teachers and teacher interns within the Jackson Public School District.
Board members, are there questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Knowles.
Thank you.
Review of agreements between Jackson State University, Division of Library and Information Resources, and the Jackson Public School District. Kimberly Smith.
Executive Director, Office of Teaching and Learning.
Good evening to our board, uh, Superintendent Green and our community. Uh, the purpose of this, um, agreement would be to, we're requesting for informational purposes, a memorandum of understanding between Jackson State University Division of Library and Informational Resources and Jackson Public Schools to conduct professional learning sessions with our high school librarians. This agreement will enable our, um, Jackson State and our librarians to, uh, participate in a four-part training series and re, and also gain resource materials to public, for our public high school educators. And it would also bring awareness to and encourage the use of our Library of Congress, primary sources and standards, promote active engagement among students, enhance professional development among educators within the learning community, and increase opportunities for bridging the gap between the divide in transition of students from secondary to post-secondary education.
Are there any questions? Okay, are there questions?
I, I got a, just a quick question. I'm excited to see this, Dr. Smith. Thank you, uh, for bringing this to us. Of course, I'm always glad to see JPS and Jackson State, my employer, uh, working together in such productive ways. Do you expect all of our librarians will be participating in this, or, um, a, a small subset of them? How many, uh, librarians do you think we'll actually have participating, and how will you recruit them?
So at this point, um, under the direction of that, of Ms. Wissington, our, uh, Director of Library Services, we're working with our high schools at this point. And so this is the first initiation part of this grant, and then hopefully we'll be able to move to, um, uh, maybe move to our second, uh, middle. But right now, I know the focus is for our students to be able to understand and how to transition from the use of, um, the high school librarians to when they get to college. Because that's one of the things that they noted, that there has been some concerns and challenges with for our students to understand really how to utilize library services once they get to college.
And do we have one librarian at each of our seven high schools?
At each of our seven high schools, there's one librarian.
Great, thank you, Dr. Smith.
Have new libraries.
Will, will those, um, librarians be involved?
Yes, and the professional development, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We'll be glad to see them on campus.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great to make use of that resource that's right there and are ready to work with us. Now we have information action items. Uh, Dr. Green?
Yes, ma'am. The administration is recommending approval of the revised job description for the Chief Operating Officer. Declining enrollment, along with the continued efforts to lean our organizational model, has led us to combine the positions of the Chief Financial Officer and the Chief Operations Officer, so that the main functional support operations are led by the same executive. Um, at the same time, the former organization of the Office of the Chief Financial Officer, as well as, um, the, the Chief Operations Officer, um, are undergoing some restructuring to ensure that the critical functions are appropriately sourced and led. Um, I'll just add, uh, board members, that, um, you know, we, as you know, we've, we've done, we've made some shifts over time to our organizational structure. As we continue to decline in enrollment, um, we, you know, we're mindful of the size of the central office and, and, um, just the breadth of the, uh, executive and senior team. Uh, we want to be, we want to ensure that we're continuing to be, um, aligned in, I'd say, in terms of our size and the way that we manage the various functional areas throughout the district. As we look at, um, our deputy superintendent role and, uh, all of the departments that kind of funnel up to the deputy, it's, um, eight or nine departments that, that are, are, um, led at an executive level by our deputy. We're seeing this COO role, um, in similar fashion. Um, and, um, and then, of course, as we think about our school principals and, and, and others throughout the district, who have multiple direct reports. Um, we don't believe that, although this is a really big job, um, we don't believe that it's insurmountable. Um, there are some, uh, potential candidates already, uh, and we've not even, um, advertised for the role. And so, um, while there are some risks, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. Uh, we do believe that this is the best move for us, given the size of our district at this time, and, um, the opportunities to meld and, and more formally connect some of these functions um, between the CFO office and the COO, current CFO and current COO offices. Um, I'll pause here to see if you have any questions, board members.
I have a question, Dr. Green. Um, so I'm assuming this is gonna affect the overall org chart? And so I'm sort of looking for like a timeline for us to get an understanding of what this means now.
Yes. Um, so as we're continuing to finalize our budget for next year, um, that, of course, we'll bring to you for approval, um, we want to make sure that the, uh, positions that, um, are built into the salary line within the budget, um, obviously that, that, that's informed by our thinking of these, um, these newly structured offices. Our commitment is that the offices don't grow. Right? So in all cases, we're not looking to grow, uh, the size of the offices, but just to, to think more critically about, um, who takes on what. Some positions will likely be elevated, um, and some meshed and that sort of thing. I would imagine, uh, not imagine, the plan is to bring to you, um, our best thinking of the, the restructured offices, um, at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Are there other questions, Ms. Dr. Green? Comments? Robbie?
Um, Dr. Luckett, were you gonna say something?
No, I'm good, Dr. Arston.
Uh, I just have a, a quick question. I'm, I'm not understanding fully. Is this, uh, uh, Chief Operating Officer has collapsed, uh, uh, other, um, other positions? I'm, I'm having trouble, I'm a visual learner, and I wish I could have an organization chart.
Uh, apologies for that. The, the, the change that I'm asking you to approve at this point is the collapsing of the two positions, CFO and COO. And so the position description that you have is, is just, um, not just, but it's, it's a collapsed, um, position description of the, the topmost functions and duties of those two, um, of those current two roles.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Now, is this a temporary repositioning? Or this is, you know, because you mentioned reasons like enrollment and this, that, and the other. And I'm trying to see if it's a temporary position to address a particular current need? Or is this a real deal reposition with the collapsing and long-term?
Right. It's, it's not intended to be temporary, obviously, you know, should, down the road, we start to, um, pick back up in terms of our size and, and the number of, um, schools and, and staff members and, and just all of the, the issues that are exacerbated with a, a greater size district, then, of course, we, we'd look at it again. But we believe that this is, uh, starting to live into our, um, smaller size district um, and, and manage it in a way that is more in keeping with and aligned with the, the current size of our district.
Thank you.
Are there other questions, Ms. Dr. Green?
Well, I don't know whether it's gonna be a real question or an observation or just, or thought. In the rationale, you've mentioned at least four times about, uh, declining enrollment. It just, the way I would see it, that that's gonna have an impact on how much, uh, revenue is gonna, the district is gonna receive.
Yes, sir.
Because the enrollment is declining.
Yes, sir.
So that would make, just in my estimation, uh, the financial officer, operating officer, even more vital and strategic. Now, I notice in the qualifications, the kind of person that you're gonna look for, is gonna be somebody with that, uh, but I would just expect that this, given what's gonna, what we're gonna face in the future, that we would need somebody who's laser-focused on finance as opposed to some other things, some other duties.
Understood.
That's, that's just my...
No, um, that is absolutely fair. Um, that's a, a, a fair reaction. Uh, I think there are a few things that I should probably clarify. So at the executive level, we expect, much like at the level of the principal, the expectation is not that the principal, as an analogy, that the principal, um, has deep, deep, um, experience and understanding with early childhood. There are those who specialize in early childhood learning, uh, early literacy, et cetera. The same with the arts or with, um, uh, with, um, other subjects. Likewise, in our exec, on our executive team, while, obviously, we want our executive team to have, um, knowledge of and capacity around specific areas, um, the, the job is not to, uh, necessarily manage finances as, um, as the folks on that team would. We've got, we will retain our Executive Director of Finance. Um, we'll return, we'll retain, um, others in purchasing, accounts payable, payroll, um, accounts receivable, um, um, all of those, um, functional areas within the team. So one of the questions that I, I received, uh, prior to the meeting about this, this item is, um, we're working to fortify that next level down, that senior level down, the Executive Director level, to ensure that they are able to stand up and manage their functional area. Finance being one, um, facilities being another, um, all of these, these other areas. And so that the executive direct, I'm sorry, the, the COO isn't spending all of their time next to the Finance Director managing the budget. We've got, you've got a team who's doing that. So that they're not spending all of their time next to the Executive Director of, of Facilities. You've got a team who's doing that, and your role is to lead out in that area. So as the COO, you get to be a thought partner. You get to push and challenge. You get to help set vision. That's not a day-to-day managing of, you know, we've got this amount of, of resourcing, and so we've gotta manage this daily, uh, in terms of our record-keeping. It's a different level of work. Um, and I, I'll just say again, you know, we, we're, we, we are, I think we needed to be larger than you might typically see, um, in terms of our executive team and our senior team, um, when we started a few years ago in this administration. We needed to be at that time. There was a huge effort around transformation, resetting expectations, learning, kind of to work differently and, and all those things. We now have some systems in place. We've now built, um, some muscle and knowledge in that, in, in each of those areas across the board. There's a greater strength along the senior leadership line, the executive directors, um, across the board, across our district, um, to where the, the role of the, the executive shifts a bit. You're not having to work side-by-side with, um, other individuals in the ways that perhaps we did before, because the issues were not only, um, great, but the systems and procedures and protocols and tools and thing, plans and things to address all of those issues across all of those areas weren't necessarily built out in the way that we, we are today. Um, I, again, I'll say, I said it before, and I don't want to oversell. Um, I, I, this is, there, there is some risk in this um, that, um, just like in any of our other roles, that you focus too much over here and not enough over here. Um, but one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure in this, in this, um, position description that the, um, um, background and experience in finance is strong is so that you can be a strong, effective thought partner with the, um, executive directors who are leading out in the, in the finance business, business budget areas. Um, so that you can lead that team and, and be right along with them and support them in the planning, um, down the road. Um, hopefully that adds a little more color to kind of what we're bringing to you. Understood.
You know where I am on that stuff.
Understood, understood.
Um, Dr. Green, do you have any, um, other districts about our size that have a structure that's similar that can serve as a model?
Yes, there, I mean, there are several. And, um, you know, typically we'll look to Birmingham and, and, um, now Little Rock. Um, there's, uh, the Shreveport, um, I'm losing the name of it, Cato, Cato Parish, I believe. Cato Parish. Lesso Memphis, they're a little larger than we are. Um, Aldine, Texas is another that we typically will look at. And, and different ones will flex in different ways. Um, you know, uh, you may recall, when I got here, we really wanted to separate school leadership, and so a, a chief of schools that would manage the, um, the assistant superintendents who supervise our principals. We wanted, that was the original vision, to separate that out from all of the other academic, um, functional areas. Curriculum, special education, um, uh, counseling, behavior, athletics, uh, on and on. And we just, we, we just could not, we couldn't, um, justify, um, splitting those functional areas out. This, um, meshing of these, this operations, um, role is, is another one of those that's just not un, uncommon. The larger you get, again, with scale, you will typically, one, you can afford to have all of those executives to lead in those na, more narrowly scoped areas. Um, but the scale of the work, the, the amount of money, the, the, um, numbers of, um, of, um, um, the, the amount of activity, um, things that you're purchasing, things that you're paying, people that you're paying, all of that is greater, and so you want more eyes on all of those things.
Are there?
I'm sorry, I, I just, I didn't want to interrupt. I was just making a note. Um, y'all might be interested to know that JPS actually used to have this function before. The role was the Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations. And I think both Fred Davis and Michael Thomas, before he left and went to Jackson State, served in that capacity. I'm not sure if there were others, but I'm, I know those two had that title. So you actually did use to have this sort of structure before.
Yeah, and thank you for that reminder. And we've used, um, actually, we're engaging with, um, Fred Davis a bit now, um, to support back office a bit.
Are there other comments, questions, of Dr. Green? Is there a motion to approve Information Action Item Eight?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the approval of Information Item Eight. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nays? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, board members.
Approval of agreement between Jackson State University and Jackson Public School. And that isn't Marvin Greer.
That's right, that's right. Good evening, President Sevek, Vice President Hilliard, Board Members, Dr. Green and community. On behalf of Dr. Greer, I'm bringing forth for Information Action Item, the granting of approval of an agreement between Jackson State and Jackson Public Schools. This request is for Blackburn Middle School to host its eighth grade class day at Jackson State University's McCoy Auditorium on May 20th, 2022, along with the practice day and a day for setup. And the use of the facility will be free of charge. And by using this facility, it'll allow ample space for scholars, their family members, staff and guests, as we continue our efforts in being COVID safe.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve this information? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any nays? No nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, this approval of the monthly financial report. Ms. Purnell?
Good evening.
Evening.
To Dr. Sevek and his absence, Vice President Mrs. Hillard, Board Members and Dr. Green, along with my JPS colleagues. This evening, the administration is recommending the board approve the monthly financial report for April 30th of 2022. The monthly financial report contains the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the reconciliation report, and district maintenance cash flow report. There's just a few highlights from the report that I'll mention. One thing is the district maintenance. If you will notice on page three of the statement of fund balance, our end of fund balance as of April 30th, 2022, was about $21.7 million as compared to $24.6, this time last year of 2021. This is, there is about 13.7 decrease from last year. And this is really contributed to our revenues, which is lagging slightly behind about a million dollars in our expenditures, growing up over about $2 million. Basically, as we all know, last year, we were exactly, we were not, we were virtual. So we were not in. Also, if you notice, most of that is going to be dealing with the budget status report. We're talking about the revenue and the expenditures there of where we, where we are at 87.4% of the revenue has been collected as of April 30th, as compared to 88.5% as of April 30th of 2021. Also, the expenditures are roughly about 86.2% expended as of April 30th, as compared to 85.2 as of April 21 of last year. So with that, our expenditures are on the rise. As I stated before, and basically, if you notice also in the report, it was stated that it's dealing with our fuel charges, along with our utilities. Since we weren't in the buildings before, and we are now, utilities on the rise. I think all of us all know that. And fuel charges are just continuing to rise as well. So those are the things that are really driving our expenditures, which are making about $2 million over. Our bank reconciliation reports, we have reconciled all of those in a timely manner, and they are all reconciled as of March 31st of 2022. The cash flow reports, report shows an imbalance of about 13.5 as compared to 13.8 this time last year of 2021. This is pretty consistent with the prior year, so we feel pretty confident about that. Also, the expenditures are at 13.6 as compared to 13.3 this time last year. Revenue collections and receivables total for the month is about 11.5 compared to April, it was about that same amount of 11.5. Also, I just want to note that the, as you all can see, the revenue is kind of gauging, the gap is kind of closing in a little bit as compared to when we looked at December of last year of 2021, also as compared to February of this year. So the revenue is closing in somewhat. Also, just to be reminded that our charter school payments were about a million dollars over this year, as it was compared to last year this term as well. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments, board members?
Ms. Hilliard, I have one question. It's a clarifying question.
Uh huh.
Ms. Purnell, this is a question that you answered in the prep document, and it was specific to Fund 3017. I know that that's been used for past insurance payments. Is there a catch-all fund for insurance payments? It was, it looks like it was created in 2013, but it sounds like it may also be the fund where we put subsequent insurance payments. Is that the right understanding?
Not necessarily for that one, since that was a construction piece, and we received those insurance proceeds for storm damages and different things of that nature. It's not the, it's not the regular one that we would use. There is a one in district maintenance that is for our regular insurance proceeds. But this one is separated out because of the nature of what the insurance proceeds were supposed to be used for. So they can carry from year to year when the facilities and operations department are able to actually be able to do all the repairs for, from the damages that we have from the different storms.
Okay. So it's like a carrying account that can roll over from year to year and be tapped for other qualified expenses?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions of Ms. Purnell? Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve Information Action Item? C.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item Finance. Okay. Ms. Purnell?
You take them all together.
Oh, you put them all together, okay. Played a trick on me, Rosal. Number nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we have Consent Agenda Item Finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Finance?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is passed. It's approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item General. All of the consent items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve? The Consent Agenda Item, Agenda Finance?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda Item. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item Personnel. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Personnel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays?
Aye.
There being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session?
Ms. Hilliard, I move that we close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
A second. It has been moved in second that we would close the general session to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Aye.
Aye.
There being none, the motion is approved. Thanks to those of you who stayed with us.
Good night, everybody.